Hello and welcome to the 2023 Meet the Candidate Forum. I'm Erica Brown. I am the editor and publisher of The Manchester Cricket. Manchester's election is on May the 16th, and we have four candidates running for two seats on the planning board. It is a race, and they are in alphabetical order. Marty Flood, to your far -- well, they have signs in front you can see. Marty Flood, Donna Firs, Susan Hanson Filbrick, and Chris Olney. Now, the planning board's job is to enforce a zoning bylaw, which means that's essentially the town's existing comprehensive set of rules that tells us what we can and cannot do with our property, whether that's commercial or residential. Our program is going to run in three parts. First, the candidates will introduce themselves briefly at about three minutes apiece. I will call on them initially in alphabetical order because I want this to be even and fair. Then, each of the candidates will be asked to respond to several questions about topical issues facing the planning board right now. We've shared these questions with the candidates ahead of time so that they have a chance to give you thoughtful responses. And then finally, Eli Bowling is here, and he has agreed to help out with audience questions because the last section of our program is going to be fielding questions from the audience, and that's probably the most satisfying part of this, to be honest with you. This forum is being taped by 1623, our lovely partners, and it's going to be broadcasted on all of their K-Band channels, both on television, social media, and on digital. My job is to make sure that the job -- this program runs on time. It's not very pleasant, but I'll try to be pleasant, and I'll step in to manage people's time when I have to, but I hope I don't. So let's get started. Let's get started with the introductions, and since we're going in alphabetical order, we're going to start with Marty Flood.
Thank you. My name is Marty Flood, and I live on Hickory Hill Road with my lovely wife, and I've raised four children in Manchester. We are proud of our children, and we're happy to be able to start their lives here in Manchester by the Sea. We love this town and its people, and my wife, Deana, and I will retire here. I am running for planning board because in the fall of 2022, town meeting was a bit of a failure. The planning board needs to slow down and get it right. Hundreds of folks in attendance that night understood little of the proposed articles, and the planning board needs to do better. That night, I commented on the curb cut article and other matters, and since then I've spoken out at town meeting about the overburden of taxes and the need to safely install artificial turf fields at the high school. A half a dozen folks in town have asked me to run for planning board spot. I have never run for an election anywhere. I am not a planner. I've had great feedback knocking on doors for the last few weeks. I'm very confident in my campaign. I have teamed up with someone that I respect greatly. She's not a planner either. Donna's a nurse, and I work with nurses at Blue Cross the last 10 years, and they're the smartest people I know, and I respect them greatly. They work harder than all of us. Their college alone is amazingly hard to get through. We believe the current articles proposed for accessory dwelling and senior housing as currently written will fail. They failed last fall. They were tabled again. Ron, the head, has put them off even further, the accessory dwelling. We, along with two other on the planning board, have more realistic ideas and goals and likely get these passed through with smaller, more prudent edits. We need something realistic, smaller, smarter. Since moving to Manchester by the Sea, I've worked at the open food pantry at my American Legion post. I'm a Navy veteran. I was a safety guy for football and coached eight years, Little League boards, and I founded the Friends of Memorial Park Improvement Project because it was something that needed to be done. It was a massive project. Dozens of meetings with people over in Essex, and it has turned out beautifully. We raised hundreds of thousands of dollars in cash and work equity, hundreds of thousands of dollars. I'm still doing it. The town came back after we finished and asked that I take care of the tennis courts because I'm a leader. I get things done, and when I make a promise, I stick to it, period. I had a lot of people not wanting that project in Essex. Y'all know Annie Cameron? Well, she called me in a huff and said, "What is this regional project?" And I met with her, and we talked, and I told her that this school board that she's on pays $7,000 a year to go over there, and they'd done nothing in the 10 years that I was here. We changed that. They love it there. The Essex vets that I've met, the older guys, they're regular guys like me. I'm not a college boy, just an enlisted guy in the Navy. I was a bounty hunter and investigator. I worked my way up to the Attorney General's office, worked for fine attorneys like Susan here, and I was damn good at it, and I still am. I'm a middle-of-the-road guy. I don't go far to the left or far to the right, and I understand everybody's position. My wife's a teacher. I understand what's going on in the schools and the money spent. I understand how much it takes to fix a road. I understand how to talk to people. We may have disagreements, but I'm going to make compromises when prudent, and I think we can compromise on some of the things that are with the planning board now that have failed. That group has failed. It might be negative, but it's the truth. I will work and compromise on this ADU's senior housing and everything else for the next three years. I promise you, I will do that. Please consider voting for me and Donna. Our group will do better, albeit at a realistic and manageable level. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, let's hear from Chris Olney.
Alphabetical?
Oh, alphabetical. I'm sorry. Donna Firs is next. I'm sorry. I went into randomized mode.
Thank you, Erica, for having us.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, 1623 Studios, and I'm really thankful to you guys staying here after the long first Board of Select meeting, so I appreciate that. If you don't know me, my name is Donna Firs, and I've been a Manchester resident for over 12 years. I live here with my husband, Phil, and four children. Yes, I said four. Three are currently attending college, and one is currently a junior here at Manchester Essex Regional High School. I graduated from Syracuse University School of Nursing with a bachelor's and focused on clinical research in both infectious disease and oncology. I received my master's of nursing from Northeastern University and am certified as an adult nurse practitioner. My focus has remained in oncology and transplant, but specifically towards the tail end of my career, it lied in geriatrics and end of life. We moved to Manchester so our children could attend the amazing schools and because we loved the small-town feel, beaches, community, and what we felt would be the best place to raise our family. Since moving here, I became heavily involved with volunteering at the high school for the past seven to eight years, bringing back the Manchester Essex Athletic Boosters, raising money to provide scholarships to the student athletes each year. We are now currently, in conjunction with some of the Board of Select, trying to bring back the carnival this fall of 2023, in October, I think around the 19th, around that weekend. So we're really excited. Four years ago, I wanted to do more than just volunteer at the high school. I wanted to give back to the community in a way that preserves our wonderful town. There was an opportunity that time to interview for an appointed position on the planning board. I was excited to be involved with zoning to help with smart growth in the town, but also to protect what we hold dear, which is our small-town character and charm. I unfortunately was not appointed at that time. One year later, I decided to be a write-in candidate, and I ran on a platform of a common-sense approach. I knew we had the recodification process in front of us, affordable housing concerns, aging infrastructures, I could go on. I read the master plan. I continued to do my due diligence with regards to understanding the important topics the planning board was addressing and stressing that not being a planner or an engineer or an architect is okay, and having a different viewpoint when looking at site plans or zoning or housing, using a scientific approach and one maybe not already formed on the topic, can provide the board with potentially different outcomes. Fast forward to the fall of 2022, at the annual town meeting, I think we had about 586 attendees to discuss and vote on many zoning bylaw articles. It was a long night with technical issues, but the presentation of most of the articles were confusing, and after about three long hours, Articles 9 through 16 were tabled for later. The planning board has been charged since 2019 to undertake a thorough review of these bylaws. There have been over 100 public meetings and forums. These changes to the bylaws were to make the zoning regulations easier to understand and administer while strengthening the laws. The lack of transparency or maybe just the presentation of these articles became overwhelming to the community and confusing. In short, I'm running to hopefully bring clarity of these articles and zoning bylaw changes to the community. Whether you vote yes or no on these articles in the future, my goal is to surely make -- to make sure each one of you understands what these bylaws mean and what it means to your neighborhood and to our community as a whole. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I'd like to really keep our eyes on the time, by the way. I'm going to quote Marty Flood. "I'm a Navy man, and it's about being on time." So next would be -- I didn't know the order that I gave you because honestly, I've been calling Susan Filbrick Susan Filbrick and not Susan Hanson Filbrick, so technically, she's next. So Susan, if it is not confusing, please introduce yourself.
It's fine. I go by Filbrick, so it's fine. It's a long name. Before I talk about me, I want to thank Erica and The Cricket and 1623 for hosting the forum tonight, Eli Bowling for moderating, and all of you for showing up and showing interest in our small-town government. I'm Sue Filbrick, and I love Manchester. There are three things I want you to remember about me. I moved here 24 years ago. I love the town. Number two, I volunteered for the position on planning board. And number three, my background as a criminal prosecutor has given me skills that I am already using on the planning board and hope to continue to use to make the planning board more successful and more efficient. All right, number one. So I moved to Manchester 24 years ago with my husband and two daughters. We were drawn by the beaches, the harbor, small-town feel, relaxed community, the history, the green spaces. Those are the things I still love 24 years later, and those are the things I will work to protect on the planning board. The second thing, I volunteered for the planning board. Last November, we've already heard a lot about the town meeting, I was horrified by it. I was horrified because some very noisy people used technical glitches and typographical errors to overtake the meeting and turn what was admittedly a lack of clear communication into a bit of a chaotic meeting. But miraculously, the planning board persevered, and they passed most of what they came to do that night. So I want to serve on the planning board to finish the job. I won't listen to the noise. I'll persevere. The third thing, my background. I served as an assistant district attorney here in Essex County, served as a federal prosecutor in Boston, and I learned the skills of strong advocacy. I will advocate for our town. Learned the skills of negotiation, clear communication, which I think I demonstrated at the last town meeting in explaining the ins and outs of adult entertainment. Negotiation skills, communication skills, advocacy, and collaboration. I'd like the opportunity to continue to use my skills on the planning board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Chris Olney?
So I too want to thank everybody for this forum and thank all of you for coming. I grew up in Manchester, and I've lived on the North Shore for almost my entire life. I'm also the only professional planner currently on the board. I've been a member for the -- on the planning board for four years, and I was part of drafting the zoning changes that were discussed at the last several town meetings. The purpose of the revised language in the zoning bylaw was to clarify and organize those regulations and not make them more difficult to understand as some people think. It won't help make life easier for developers either, but the zoning regulations are complicated, and they're legal documents, and so they need to be properly drafted. It's been challenging to present these changes to the voters, and in fact, even us on the planning board who deal with this language all the time have trouble understanding it. So it's not surprising that the town meeting had trouble understanding as well. But the good news is that the most difficult parts of the zoning changes that we proposed have been passed, most of them by a two-thirds vote by the town meeting, and for that, I'm very thankful, and I thank all the voters for faith in us in making those changes. I'm running because, as Sue said, the job is not done. We need to adopt regulations to guide our work and to help residents through the permitting process. We need to address housing issues. There's been a lot of talk already tonight about the lack of diversity and affordability of housing in this town, and it's a serious problem. We need to allow a greater diversity of housing options for seniors, for teachers and first responders who serve this community and can't live here. We also need to find suitable housing for our adult children who can't afford to move into town. We need to allow for more efficient development of different kinds of housing besides just the single-family homes that we allow today. Most of what we're seeing in town now is by right, people tear down little inexpensive houses and replace them with big expensive ones, and that is unsustainable for the future. We need to create an entire community here, and that includes people with different incomes and backgrounds. We need to manage development, not deny it, and not to pretend that it doesn't exist. As Tom Keough and I both know, growing up here, the town is vastly different today than it was back in the '50s, and it's going to be vastly different going forward as well. What we need to do is manage that change as it happens and not try to fight it.
Thank you very much. Those were all excellent. Okay, we're going to move into the next one. That was actually the slide for our last segment. So we're going to go into our questions. We have four of them, and hopefully we'll be able to get through them, and they're packed, so they're all really legitimate questions. So if we end up going over, it's because you guys are talking about something important. So the first question is, within the next six months, the largest commercial development in decades, cell signaling technologies will come before the planning board, as well as other boards. As a matter of fact, they are going to be coming forward informally very soon, and then they're going to come forward formally before the planning board next month. Would you support this project? What is your stance on commercial development in Manchester, and why? Let's start with Susan Filbrick.
Cell signaling and the limited commercial district. The master plan, which was finalized in the fall of 2019, has as the first of its two top priorities as increasing revenue through commercial development to help with the tax burden. Right now, 95% of our revenue comes from residential taxes, and I think our property owners are at the breaking point with that. We need to take advantage of commercial development to help ease our tax burden. We need another source of revenue. So I'm in favor of development in the limited commercial district and managed growth as it can be done in the general commercial district. With respect to cell signaling, they came forward on February 13th to give an informal presentation, and that was televised by 1623 also. I was looking at the broadcast again last night, so I urge you all to take a look at it if you haven't yet. It was a great overview introduction to the project. They have not yet submitted an application for a special permit, however, so it's very difficult to sit here tonight and say, "Yes, I support it," or "No, I don't," because although we've had a wonderful introduction, we have not received an application yet. They're coming in on Monday again to talk about parking, again, an informal presentation, so I recommend that everyone tune in to hear it. Based on the initial introduction, though, there is some reason to be encouraged by the project. They are -- they're paying attention to our list of requirements in applying for a special permit. They seem to be ticking down the list as they present the details of the project to us, but as I said, we can't really make an evaluation at all until they submit a formal I do think they are an applicant that we can work with, however. Don't know how it will end up, but I'm encouraged by the prospect of them coming forward and increasing development in the limited commercial district.
Thank you. Okay, Marty Flood?
So in my notes, I write, "tax revenue, tax revenue, tax revenue, tax revenue," in big bold. It is essential for our older folks that we have tax revenue come into this town. One of the questions that we were given was, "How do the old folks deal with the price of the housing and how many we have?" We need tax revenue badly. Cell signaling is going to be a massive plus for our town, massive plus. There shouldn't be anybody on this planning board that's elected or re-elected or what have you that doesn't push this through. It's a no-brainer. There would have to be something incredibly wrong with the company or their plan or their application not to have them come. Imagine all the jobs that'll be here. The kids from the high school could go in the score program and do internships. There's a -- that would start this town moving forward with some commercial development. I'm also -- was impressed with a lot of these guys. They are local guys that went out there and made it big, and I just think it's really super impressive what they do and how much money they've made and what they've done around the globe. I looked into them a few years ago when I was looking to raise money, and I'm nickel-and-dime people to death to raise a few hundred thousand dollars, and I sent off an application, and I talked to one of the women there, and she told me all about the company. And then I learned more about the company. It is amazing, amazing company. There should be nobody in this room or in our town that says no to cell signaling in the limited commercial district. And let me say, in addition, we need to find some more limited commercial districts and area in town to develop outside of this, not only for commercial, but for some senior housing and for some government-run housing, if you want to call it that. We have to do a little bit more. I've been here 13 years, and I hear a lot of people talking, and there is not a lot of stuff happening, period. So I am for cell signaling. I will be for cell signaling. Please, I would appreciate your vote. I will be all over that, all over that. Thank you.
Okay, great. That's awesome. Chris Olney?
So I too support cell signaling proposal, and Marty's absolutely right. It's going to be critical for tax revenue for the town. I'm going to go a little onto a side here, which is, their proposal also addresses an environmental problem up there, which is the large quarry of disturbed earth that is a possible source of pollution to our water supply. So their development may have very positive impacts on both the environment and on our water supply as well. As Sue said, we haven't seen the actual application yet for the special permit, but based on what they've said so far and what they've shown us so far and their basic attitude, I'm in full support. I would also support additional commercial development in the LCD, and I would even consider assisted living complex as well.
Awesome, thank you. Donna?
I think you just -- did you read that from here from my? I'll give you a minute. I also too will be supporting the cell signaling development in the LCD. Obviously, the application hasn't been put through, and it is a -- it's not as a right of zoning, so the planning board retains the discretion to deny any special permit if it's not in the best interest of the town, and obviously having input from the Conservation Commission, which is very important. I like the fact that, and I was -- and I watched that video too, Sue, we recently passed Article 10 zoning bylaw amendments in the fall to change some of the regulations so that they are more appropriate for laboratory uses up in the LCD, while also requiring complete site plan and special permit review. One of the amendments was specific to cell signaling, which was changing the height regulations of the zoning for cell signaling, specific for labs which needed mechanical equipment in their ceilings. And one of the things was taller buildings have smaller footprints, and this also accomplishes the sustainability goal of using up less land for given building, thus protecting more open space and minimizing impacts on ground and surface water. Along with the other three candidates here, with cell signaling, the increased tax revenue will hopefully prevent future overrides. Based on our master plan, as Sue said, 95% of our existing revenues are drawn from residential taxes and are not sufficient to maintain or replace as-needed current infrastructure or achieve desired goals. Of the 26.5 million collected in annual property taxes, this is fiscal year 2017 information, only 4.5% or 1.2 million came from industrial and commercial uses. So you can see where cell signaling's taxes, revenue would be beneficial. I hope with increased revenue that we generate, it can help with infrastructure needs, maybe help with public safety vehicle support, continued support replacing our water pipes. Hopefully, we won't have any negative impact on traffic since cell signaling is rate-off of 128. Maybe increasing revenue to the businesses downtown would also be a great thing as well. Parking could be an issue downtown with the increased volume of workers, but potentially cell signaling could have transport vans for these workers to come back and forth, which would alleviate that. I am in support of cell signaling as long as the planning board and Conservation Commission has a complete overview of the special permit so we can make sure the best interest of our town and all of its natural resources are protected. Thank you.
That's great. You're very respectful of time, Donna. I love it.
I timed it. I had it at 1:48.
I love it. You went over, but you were actually right on. You were like right in the zone.
Sorry, I'm in the zone.
All right. So let's -- that was -- it's great to start with a unifier, isn't it? Not a single bit of disagreement when it comes to cell signaling. I love it. Okay, so let's get into the next section. Our current senior in public housing in Manchester has been a long-running challenge. What do you think we should do about it? Donna Firs?
So I can't guarantee I'm in the two-minute window here. This is a very passionate topic for me, but I'll do my best. With affordable housing currently right now, we're only at about 5.05% of what the state is requiring. We need approximately, I think as John Round mentioned, about 136 more units. We're shy of that. We currently have Newport Park, the Plains and Loading Place, along with a newly purchased Powder House Lane, all of these encompassing family handicap, elderly, and affordable. I'm hoping through the Manchester Housing Authority, through the trust, through the town, we can potentially build on already existing lots of the Plains and Newport Park and Loading Place, and potentially, as discussed earlier, looking at the DPW site if moved. The Powder House Lane right now is 29 units. Unfortunately, none of those units currently can be counted towards our subsidized housing index. A unit needs to be vacant and then put back into the lottery to then be considered part of that number that we can use to kind of decrease what we're required for the state. I would like any new affordable housing built -- any new affordable housing built will most likely go to the lottery and potentially not to Manchester residents, so you need to negotiate with the builders and the contractors and with the DHCD, which is the Department of Housing and Community Development, to hopefully get a percentage of those units to go to residents. I think it's really important for affordable housing, and I'm going to go real quickly into senior, that we do work with our Manchester Housing Department and the Affordable Trust and the CPC to keep working on other housing opportunities in our town. With regards to senior housing, it really is an absolute passion of mine, given my field of, towards the tail end of my career, of geriatrics and end-of-life and hospice care, that 39% of our population in Manchester are seniors and growing, and has the planning board done a focus group with our seniors? I know in our master plan it states senior housing, diversity of senior housing is a must, but do we know specifically the exact types of housing that the seniors are asking for and needing? I think that's an important study that we could do. The current proposed bylaw as written mixes in both residential and commercial housing in all districts. I just think that needs a little bit of work. I would love very much, as Chris said, again, very supportive of trying to build an assisted living facility up at the limited commercial district. I think it's a great opportunity with the medical building there, access to Route 128 to get to Beverly Hospital. A lot of -- A lot of ease of no residential impact with medical vehicles coming and going. There's also a new development being built in Wenham. It's called Maplewood Senior Housing. It's an app, it's being built by Harbor Light Builders and it's a 62 plus affordable unit based on 30 to 60% of the individual's average medium income. And 69% of those 45 units currently are going to actual Wenham residents. And that was negotiated from Harbor Light as well as the Department of Housing, DHCD. I think that's absolutely something that we should really consider trying to figure out something to do like that here in Manchester. Maybe not at 45, really start small, maybe 20 units. I've actually looked at some property and land off of Summer Street. Not quite sure we could make it an overlay district or not to try to make something small. Again, I'm looking to, to hit a population that so desperately needs this type of housing to hopefully get more percentage of that housing to Manchester Essex residents. I think that's very important. I will look, I will work diligently on these topics. Sorry.
Thank you. That went way over. Chris, why don't we just go down the line?
Okay, so I guess Donna said a lot. On my behalf, thank you.
You gave me props.
So there are three public housing complexes in town. Most of them, most of the units of those three are for seniors. They're all built over 40 years ago and they are desperate need of renovation. Newport Park and the Plains have half their units on the second floor. They're walk ups and that's not appropriate for seniors. So we need to do something. And the Affordable Housing Trust has been meeting with the Housing Authority and together we're trying to find an experienced nonprofit developer such as Harbor Lights or the CDC, which owns Powder House Lane, to put together a plan to both renovate and expand those properties. It's really outside of the planning board, except there's a possibility that we may have to be permitting the project. One thing I want to say is that the Affordable Housing Trust has in its coffers right now about a million dollars roughly that the town has provided to us over the past five years. That's almost enough to buy one house in Manchester. So we could spend all of that money on one house and make it affordable, or we could try to leverage that million dollars or a part of that million dollars into this kind of a project to attract the nonprofit developer to undertake it. And that's the plan and I hope to work hard on that going forward.
That's great. Thank you, Chris. Sarah? I mean, sorry, Sue, Susan, Susan.
No problem. Well, both Chris and Donna have referenced many of the things I was going to say. But I think most important, this is a little bit out of our lane in the planning board, except for possibly working on a special permit situation. One, not to simply repeat the need from the crumbling units. I mean, I live on Loading Place Road and that site there needs work. I see it every day as I drive by. But one thing I would like to see is an attempt at collaboration with the state. I know Chris is on the Affordable Housing Trust and is closer to that relationship than I am. But my understanding is that these are state assisted or partially state owned properties. And I would like to see our town collaborate with the state in terms of coming up with a viable solution for these particular properties.
Great, Marty?
Yeah, thank you. So senior housing and public housing. My wife and I drove by the Plains last night for the first time. She said, let's take a look. It is old. There's a lot of people over there that probably like something newer. Again, 13 years and I've been hearing this over and over and over. We don't have doers. We don't have people who want to take on a project. We talk a lot. These public housing projects need to be redone, tore down if possible, and then made better. The Plains is utilizing, half the property at the Plains is not being used. That's fine. Let's put together a project and put someone on the planning board to get that going. There's, like I said in my opening, we need to find more places in Manchester that has property that we can develop. Other limited commercial districts, other places for public housing. I don't understand why people that have been on these boards for so long have not done that yet. I will do that. I don't understand why people don't put themselves out there and they just talk. I don't like that. I don't even think that's good. Good for you to, to say things and move on. Mr. Olney's been on the Affordable Housing Trust for years. Let's go, people. As far as the senior housing in town, there's an article to do senior housing. The article is so broad that it encompasses every type of senior housing. And that senior housing could go by special permit through the planning board, the elected officials, the politicians that want to run on their, on their point of view. And you just can't do it that way. That's why that meeting last year was so bad because no one agreed with that stuff. They didn't understand it. It wasn't the technical glitches and there was, thank God, there were 600 people, 300 in here and three over there. Thank God people are interested. But no one is doing the job in getting this done. Okay? I've done a small project, okay? It was not easy. I understand it's going to be a lot of work. I promise you that we can find some senior housing. As far as the article, let me go back to that. You can't put senior housing in residential districts where people have spent millions of dollars to have an quiet home. You have to do it differently. You have to compromise. There has to be overlay districts where we can put and find in this town where we can put senior housing. That whole eight, senior housing article needs to be redone. If you elect me, I will do that immediately. As far as getting money from the state, I will call Bruce Tar the day I'm elected and I'll have lunch with him and my son's godfather and I will say, where is the money? How do we get the money? Help us build these places out. Just do it. So many people are talking and not doing it. It's incredible. I'm nothing special, but I'm just going to do it if I'm on this thing. And I am tired of people saying they need to get this stuff. Of course, we need public housing help. Of course, we need senior housing help. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we have a big media issue. Next, the required MBTA community overlay district mandate from the state. As an MBTA community, Manchester must consider whether to create multifamily zoning near the train station at the end of the next year or face losing access to state grant, how, state access to state grants from housing, the Housing Choice Initiative, the Local Capital Projects Fund and Mass Works Infrastructure Program. Do you support this zoning or not? What options does the planning board have to manage this issue? And how do you think your preferred option, what you, where your belief is, would impact the town? What would the result of your beliefs be on the town? Let's start with Donna first. Sorry, you were the first person.
I was the first person the last time. You want me to go first again?
Yes, exactly.
Oh, okay. So in 2021, Governor Baker stated that we were having a housing crisis in Massachusetts. And in conjunction with the work of the Department of Housing and Community Development, they came up with this 40A MBTA zoning district. This would allow the construction of dozens of multifamily housing units. In Manchester, per our interim town planner, Betsy Ware, 37 acres adjacent to our MBTA station. We would utilize 15 acres around the half a mile radius and the other 22 of the multifamily units would be based in other, in other districts. The guidelines state that we need one zoning district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted by right. And what by right means is that there's no need for a special permit, variance, zoning amendment, waiver or any other discretionary zoning approval. The site plan is allowed as long as it's not unreasonable. There's no required energy efficiency or climate mitigation, no pricing structure, and there's no affordable component at this time that is under review at this particular point. The guideline states 15 units per acre per, is minimum. It can be more. No age, no age restrictions and it's suitable for families and children. This could represent, based on 37 acres, if you multiply that by 15, 555 new units at 100% build out. Per Greg Fetish Bill, he doesn't believe that we'll get to that point. But I'm always like, prepare for the worst and hope for the best. So if we do the numbers and that were to happen, and we don't know, John Round had some numbers earlier of not really knowing what we have already downtown, how many multi-unit, units that we have already downtown that we can count so that maybe we can knock off some of those numbers. But let's just say I don't have that information because I don't. If we think of a 555 units, one to two cars, over 1,000 cars, over 1,000 people, with a population in the 5,000 range in Manchester for the past 20 years, that's almost a 20% increase in population. Now again, I'm not saying it's going to get there today because these guidelines are for zoning purposes now. They're not requiring us to build. Okay? So I'm concerned because we live in a floodplain. Our village is in flood zone. Our train was built on tide plains. Masco and Reed Park were original tidal flats. We currently have a coastal vulnerability action plan that hopes to reduce these coastal ricks. We need a full capacity study to deem what we can build in our town and what our tipping point is. Move ahead to be proactive with the MBTA task force, which is going to be very important. But we should make no decisions regarding this type of growth without data. We need an independent outside capacity study made from an engineering company regarding crowding, traffic, parking, sewer, water, schools and public safety. As I said before, we don't even know how many multi-unit housings we have in the half mile zone currently. Let's just get the data.
Okay, so you're not committing to anything?
We need the data and I want to hear some information from the task force.
Okay. And the deadline for us to bring this to a town meeting vote is?
As Greg Fetish Bill stated in January 9th Gloucester Times, he said the earliest would be spring town meeting, 2024. Greg, if I'm correct, the latest would be the fall of 2024. Since the deadline for the DHCD is December.
Exactly, so the requirement is that we do it by the end of 2024.
Correct.
It's not, it's not what Greg Fetish Bill said.
No, he just said that from bringing it to a town meeting, it's either going to be the spring or the fall of 2024.
So I just heard you say that we should do all these studies and I'm wondering if we have the time, that's all. But anyway, but it, get the data.
Get the data.
Yeah. Marty Flood, why don't you go next?
Sure, I mean, the MBTA 40A is a gigantic monster we'll have to deal with. Imagine that people in Boston have told 175 some towns that they have to build out or allow people to build out multifamilies all over Massachusetts. That's really tough. And then they take all our money that we have and they sprinkle it over top of us and give it back to us, our own money to do this. How confident can you be with something that they hold your own money over your head? And they're also going to add more grants and things pulled back from us. It's just disgusting. It's not the American way. I am, as liberal as Massachusetts is, this is beyond anything that I can even imagine. Okay, there's a housing crisis, but there's also buildings in Boston that are empty. I go down to the buildings down there, they're completely empty. My building has 12 floors. They're spending a million dollars a month down there and no one's in them. This is a, it's, building out downtown with multifamilies and having possibility of 550 some odd units all spread out in town means that Manchester by the Sea will be under construction for 20 years. Now, I'm not, I'm no simpleton, okay? I'm a simple guy, but I'm not stupid. People are going to want to make money on their property downtown. Those properties down there are going to be worth millions. You can tore down your house and do 15 units down on Tappan Road and you will never have to work again, nor will your kids. Okay? I understand that point of view. I also understand that it's a choice by our town. Okay? We have people that would like to build out and have more housing. But to believe that it's, there's no affordable mandate, that you're going to have your kids move into town in these apartments or townhomes? They're going to be millions of dollars. Are you serious? You could put three townhomes in a lot down there and they'd go for a million five each. My kids can't do that and my daughter's going to get a hell of a job in a year. Come on. Let's be realistic. Don't put the teachers and the police and, and the workers that make a salary similar to what I do and try to move your point? That's ridiculous. It's disgusting. Don't treat people like that and use them to get your way on your things. The MBTA is ridiculous. I would do something along the lines, first of all, I would say no. Then I would, I'd have the town vote. And the town vote said no. But in the meantime, if I get elected, let's find some compromise and go out and count all of the things that Mr. Olney has said that we might, he actually mentioned in one of his letter, we might already be there.
Exactly.
So did Mr. Round. I like Mr. Round. Mary Ann sold us the house 13 years ago. Sweetheart. Why aren't we talk, all we do is talk. Why are we counting these properties and figuring out where we're at? It's the biggest bunch of talkers I've ever seen. Get to work. You're like the, the commission officers on my Navy ship. They talk, talk, talk. They don't do the 18 hours a day and work. It's unbelievable. It's unbelievable. I'm sorry, I'm very passionate, but this is the way I, I roll. This is it. Put me in and I will work.
Marty, you're over time.
Very good. I think they got my point of view.
I think they did too. Susan Filbrick.
Phew. So the first thing I want to say is that no wonder people are so worried about this issue listening to Donna and Marty. That there, every coffee I've been to while I've been running or meet and greet, this is top of mind. And it's because people like Donna and Marty say, it's going to look like Rantoul Street. The town's just going to be leveled. Every green space is going to be gobbled up. I think we need to just take a break and take a step back. The Select Board knows how important this issue is. They've already put together an MBTA zoning task force. Chris and I are on it. They've drawn from the boards in the town, that various boards, so we'll have various viewpoints and professional experience. And on Monday, the Select Board and Planning Board are interviewing eight candidates from the residents at large to sit on the committee. And there's so much work to be done. But it's not just about gathering data. It's walking around our town and seeing what we have. It's walking around our town and seeing what we have. Chris is very fluent in, um, the number of units we have. He thinks we're pretty close. Um, the half-mile radius that Donna spoke of, it does say developable land. Obviously, land in the ocean is not, you can't develop that. So there are pieces of the statute for us to look at. Um, I think there's a lot of work to be done on the task force in exploring every available option we have as a town. Putting together scenarios that will work as a compliance plan, but also investigating what Marty wants to do and just say no. First of all, you need to look at the Attorney General's letter that was sent in March to all the MBTA communities, saying, "You don't just risk losing your funding of certain grants, and we need those grants. When did we start turning down money from the state? We need every grant the state is willing to give us." So that in itself should give us pause in saying no. But the other reason is, according to the Attorney General's letter, um, this is a mandate. There will be either civil consequences from the state or we may risk litigation from the state or the federal government. Just saying no isn't an option here. Let's work as a town to come up with a very thoughtful, managed approach. Now, um, Marty, in his prior answer, uh, mentioned Senator Tar. I've already spoken with, uh, our local representative. I haven't had a chance to call Senator Tar yet. But she is all over helping our town, um, advocate with the state. You know, we are in a unique situation with our town, with our floodplain, um, with the ocean, uh, with our population size. Uh, we've been around since 1645. We're just different from a lot of the other towns. Let's advocate for what's best for our town as a way to comply.
Hmm, that's great, thank you. Everyone's going a little over, and it's okay, because this is an important topic. It's very, there's a lot of interest, so, there we go. It's just I want everyone to go over around the same amount. So, uh, Chris Only, you're, you can...
So, uh, one point I want to make is that, uh, the state will also hold hostage the funding for any public housing as part of their mandate requirement. So, I'm tying the previous discussion to the MBTA community, saying, "If we don't do this, we're not going to have any funding for public housing from the state." And they are the ones that provide the subsidy, and they'll provide the capital expenses that we need. And so we can't afford to, to just blow this off and say we don't need to do it. But I am pretty sure that we can comply with the MBTA zoning without doing very much in terms of changing zoning. And I'll tell you why. First, we already have over 550 residential units in the downtown. Second, we already allow conversion of single-family homes by right in the downtown to a three-family. That's by right. Now, I've never seen one done, maybe one's been done, but nothing recent. That seems to indicate that even if things are allowed by right, doesn't mean they're actually going to happen. But just in terms of density, a three-family house on a 6,000-square-foot lot, which is the minimum size in the downtown, is an overall density of 21 units an acre. That's more than the 15 that the state requires. There are also a number of buildings, as John Round pointed out, in the downtown that already are way exceeding 15 units an acre. Uh, the buildings on 12 Summer Street, um, the condos on Brook Street, uh, the Powder House Lane properties. Uh, there are lots of buildings in the town that already have the density required. So we don't have to go way out of our way to do this. The problem with our downtown is that our zoning does not allow what's built in the downtown right now. And that's why none of the units are going to count unless we change the zoning to say that what's there is allowed by right. We do that, we're already three-quarters of the way probably there. We're going to have to do much more analysis to, to make sure that's true, but just based on those facts, I think we're much closer than we think. We don't have to, to panic and think that the world is going to hell because the state's telling us to make a dense downtown, which is what we want anyway.
Great, thank you. You're actually under time.
We did the work, too.
And I, I do, I, I think that's worth emphasizing, because this is something that is very concerning, this issue. And it is actually true that most of the downtown already complies because it preceded zoning. And that's very, very important. So if you look at it and you say, well, look at it within the lens of this particular, you know, challenge, let's call it, that the state has, and I understand, you know, Marty's frustration, um, you know, but, uh, when you look at downtown, I think that, um, the, the research that's been done is that most of it complies, um, already, um, and would not be able to be built more. Um, unless you just said, oh, let's, let's, uh, let's turn downtown into a 15-story, you know, zoning thing, which nobody's going to do. Um, anyway, okay, so, we're down to our last question. Um, statistically, Manchester's population is getting older in age. It is, it's undeniable. Um, our school, uh, you know, students are declining because of that. It's related to that. Um, and the town is getting more expensive to live in. Um, you guys have talked, every one of you have ta, has talked about this in your own way. Um, so I don't want to rehash, um, you know, things you've already talked about. But specifically, what do you think we should do about it? And maybe I'll add, throw out an additional challenge. If you had like one easy idea to do, you know, a low-hanging fruit, what would it be, um, to address this issue? And I'm going to add that to the question, and I did not tell them that ahead of time. I literally just thought of it. So, um, let's start, um, with you, Marty.
So, it's a tough question. It's worded a little funny, you know? Older folks are getting older in pricey homes, and, and I say to the older folks, "The alternative is, is a lot worse." That's the funny joke. Um, you're not going to be able to control the, the real estate prices in town. And if you're older and you're looking to downsize, I think the, you've got to make a decision. Real estate is flying across the nation, okay? Manchester by the Sea is one of the most beautiful places to live. People want to come here and buy a single-family home and get quiet. They've been in towns, we lived in Belmont for a while. We wanted to come out and get quiet. Um, older folks, I mean, uh, some of the things that did happen in town were the trash bags, which, that was something that I didn't like. I, we do 10 trash bags a week, but that helps the older folks that are by themselves that have one bag of trash. The sports tax keeps $400,000 down, okay? From going out to the older people, to taxes. We need to keep our taxes down, okay? I spoke the last time at the, uh, last town meeting about how, not John, but the other folks on the board, um, selectmen, wanted to raise our taxes $300,000 and put it in the bank. Okay, that was 251 to 37, my side won on that. That's just not responsible. Let's help the older people out, okay? By keeping taxes as low as possible. They're on a budget. My in-laws, my mother before she passed, they look at their money every month and they say, "I've got this." Why am I paying another $500 a year for a silly project that never works that politicians in town want to do? Okay? Let's help the older people, let's get them housing. Um, but, you know, I can't, you know, do wave a magic wand and have some, something with the price of housing. It's, it's, it's the way economies, economies work. It's, it's just an impossible question to ask.
I got, I got you. I, I actually, um, we, we kind of meant for you to think about sort of zoning and planning, and you actually just answered the question at the end, uh, when you said about senior housing. So, thank you. Um, Susan Filbrick?
Um, so, the first, uh, response that I have is we need to pass our senior housing bylaw. That was one of the bylaws that was proposed, um, at the fall town meeting, uh, last year. Uh, that was passed over. Uh, we did some rework since I came on the board in January, and I did just want to address that one more time. When I said I volunteered to go on the board, I raised my hand in December after reading about it in the tides. And as far as I know, no one else volunteered. I interviewed in January, and I was unanimously appointed. Since that time, we've reworked the senior housing bylaw. Um, we proposed it again, uh, to the Select Board, and based upon the response, we passed it over again at the last town meeting. It does need some more work. But that, that has to be one of our first priorities, uh, on the Planning Board, to get the senior housing, uh, zoning bylaw passed. Uh, we need to put it before the town in a very understandable way, again, with pros and cons and examples. Um, that's the first thing we can do. In terms of, uh, affordable housing for seniors, uh, we've talked about that a little bit. But the town can't be in the business of real estate. Uh, other than the Affordable Housing Trust, we don't really have the means to go out and purchase housing for seniors. All we can do is work with the state to improve what we already have and get good proposals to have that developed. The other thing we need to do is, um, work on a couple of the other bylaws that were passed over, which would help to increase housing opportunities of other sizes. Things like the accessory dwelling unit. Um, that would be helpful for many families. Um, they can have a senior live in the dwelling unit. Um, in addition, uh, we had considered a bylaw, um, dealing with cluster zoning. I think we need to look at that. There are just other, um, ways the Planning Board can move forward on a variety of housing types to help increase, um, more affordable housing within our community without the town having to purchase housing.
Wonderful, thank you. Donna, why don't you go next?
Um, yes, thank you. I did discuss a lot of my passion regarding senior housing, and I don't disagree with, with Sue, and I'm sure Chris is going to say, I think the season, the senior housing bylaw is something very important that we need to continue to tweak and get that to town meeting to pass. I, I just would like a tweak to be separating residential senior housing with, and commercial senior housing. If we want an assisted living facility, I would prefer an assisted living facility to be in the LCD versus potentially in a residential area. So, other than that, there's a couple of other different things, but that's easily workable, and the Planning Board could all discuss it, and hopefully it could be, um, available to go forth at the next town meeting. And I also don't necessarily disagree with the accessory dwelling unit. It's a, it's another affordable unit in a, in a person's home to allow elderly, uh, elderly people to, to live, hopefully on the first floor, um, with the bathroom and the bedroom, there's not a lot of climbing, things of that nature. Again, I think the, the bylaw as written still needs a little bit of tweaking, but it is another option that we can have in this community for senior citizens, which I'm not necessarily opposed to. Again, I, I think we have to look at, you know, parts of that bylaw that I don't need to get into, per se, but that we would just need to look at. But it is very important and another option for seniors and affordability. Um, my other thing is that I mentioned, um, 39% of our town, as I said before, is 60-plus. Manchester is a safe and vibrant town, known to be very close-knit and friendly community. And the cost of living here is over 80% above the US average, making it a high-cost place to live. And the median income listing, listing price right now is 1.1 million, and the median selling price is about 860,000. So, you know, it's, 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 it's very important that we look at the season, uh, the, the senior housing and getting these bylaws, um, written correctly and being able to be passed. If you want our seniors to age in place in Manchester, you have to minimize any cost of living increases. Retired individuals have fixed incomes made up of social security, savings, pensions, all of which are traditionally fixed. So taxes and fees disproportionately affect the elderly or anyone living on a fixed income. So as a town, we need to be and make fiscally responsible decisions and not raise property taxes and fees every time we're faced with difficult decisions. Trade-offs need to be made. Thank you.
Great, that was great. Um, in terms of time, Mr. Philbrick. Um, Chris Only?
Okay, I've got quite a bit, I may use up the time.
That's all right. This is the last answer before we go to Q and A from the public.
So, uh, we need to understand a couple of things here. One is that Manchester is really the only town amongst our neighboring cities and towns that does not allow senior housing. One reason we can't, the Affordable Housing Trust can't build these things is because our zoning doesn't allow it. So it's a very simple answer. We have to change our zoning to allow things like senior housing to happen. We do have some senior housing in town, but it's grandfathered, it's non-conforming, and it's income-restricted, and it's in terrible shape. For seniors who want to downsize or obtain some personal care services, they have to move to another town or another city. We don't even allow for in-law apartments unless you happen to have a double-sized lot. We need to stop thinking about senior housing as just big complexes. They can be just a few units. There's even a thing called micro-assisted living, where in just four or five units, uh, the residents all get personal care services from a visiting nurse. I guess you'd call that a commercial use, and that would be allowed in a residential district? Give me a break, that's, that's, uh, personal care services is not commerce. That's providing support to people living in a, in a building. I was recently asked if I would support a special permit for the construction of a big assisted living complex on Masconomo Street. I told her no. The road's too narrow, there are no suitable utilities, and it wouldn't fit into that neighborhood. But there is an existing building there, it's got six garages on the front of it. And although it's not going to be, financially feasible, that's the kind of building that could be converted to an apartment complex for six to eight seniors if we have the permitting in place. And that would be a great use of that building, because I don't know who else is going to buy and live in it. We can have, one of the things we've done is establish specific design criteria to assure that special permits for senior residences will fit into the fabric of the town. They can be big and they can be small. And one of the reasons we want them in all districts is because why would one district be more suitable for senior housing than another? Really, the criteria is, does the proposed project fit on the site? Does it relate to the neighborhood? Does it have utilities? Those are the questions we should be asking, not whether it should be only in the L, the C district or the LC district or, um, or in the general district. It can be, should be allowed in any district, as long as it fits. The reason this is important is because, uh, I'm going to tell you a little story here about a civil engineer who served for many years as a volunteer on town boards. But he recently had to move to Beverly because he wanted to downsize, and there was nothing available in this town. He had the money to buy a smaller house, but there weren't any on the market, so he had to move. And we lose that expertise and those resources. That's the kind of thing we need to be careful about.
Hmm, that's great. Thank you. Okay, well, that concludes the, um, sort of moderated, uh, portion of our program. And we're going to move now to, uh, questions from the public for the candidates. Uh, so if you have any questions, um, raise your hand. And Eli Bowling, thank you very much.
Can we have a closing, please?
We're going to do that, oh, uh... I was going to do it after the Q and A, but you can do it now.
No, I'm sorry, I thought you did it before with the selectmen before the Q and A.
No, we did it after the Q and A.
Oh, good, go ahead.
But no, no, you know what? It's already started. Let's do a closing round, and then we'll go to Q and A. It does not matter to, to me at all. So, let's get started with you, Marty.
Sure, so, to make it clear, I am very, very interested in some of the articles that are there. I want them rewritten and edited. The ADU units is very, uh, interesting to me. I would like to do something that someday at my place with the ADUs. I am not a no, but I'm a no the way it is written now. And I think Ron has tabled that because of a density issue or something, and my conflict was something with the MBTA. I don't understand that. I will find out about that. Senior housing, the problem with the overly broad senior housing is that it, it is left to the Planning Board members, the elected people, to make the final decision on those special zoning, okay? Then it becomes a kind of a politics issue. Who's on the board that's going to allow that or not? Currently, the board is doing a bad job of getting these out. They've tabled them, they, they don't have the talent to get these through. They need to be reworked, and Donna and I, and two others on the board, we'll have a majority of that board, and we will get these through somehow. In addition, um, as far as the MBTA, I'm hearing that we might be okay with the MBTA? That we might already be there? I mean, is that realistically possible? I don't think so. I think we need to really look at that in the coming months. Compromise, come up with some different numbers, figure it out. But there's so much talk about what is and what isn't. And they've had plenty of time to take care of this. Why are we, we're, we're almost into 2020, uh, you know? This was like a year ago they knew this was coming. That law is two years old. It's unbelievable that we're still waiting. This so-called task force, and I don't like task force, because it just means the people that are supposed to do their job are putting it on others to do the job, because they don't want to make a, make a decision. I don't like task forces. Um, but we're going to have one, and they're going to give a, 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 um, recommendation, and the Planning Board will make a vote on it. All of the things that are in the Planning Board right now need to be, uh, articles need to be redone and rethought. They're not going to pass in town. They are not. So you can say all the things that we need, but you need to get some kind of compromise where people actually want what you have. And explain to them, "I don't understand why you haven't been able to do that, maybe because what you have out there now is not what people want." Um, excuse me, and, and also, I just want to say one last thing. I have said it repeatedly in everything I've posted and written. There is no affordability in the MBTA. There's no mandates. There is no affordability in the ADUs. There's no affordability in the senior housing articles. There is none. I call, this is my last thing. Lastly, I call on the residents and officials in Manchester by the Sea to add affordability part to all building projects in the future. The, the, the town and state initiatives do not require affordability. I will make it an election campaign point going forward, irregardless of the MBTA 40A, of the 40B, or town articles. 10 to 20% of affordability has to go into every single project. I grew up on Adrian Street, and we had a project across the street in Rockville, Maryland. My neighbors were black men and women. My neighbors were Chinese family, the Sheks. My neighbors were Jewish families, okay? Some people in town are a little afraid of that. If you get affordability, you get people from other parts of the state or other parts of the country to come in here. It's okay, okay? It's okay. Affordability is a hassle. hassle. It's hard. It's expensive. It takes profit out of the builders, but it is an absolute must. I will not vote for anything that does not have affordability in the article or the MBTA or anything like that. I will not do it. Don't vote for me if you don't want affordability. I will not be here. Anything that comes through, I will mandate that anybody builds anything, senior, if it gets through, fine. Not going to fight with anyone. But affordability is an absolute must for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Why don't we go down the line?
So, I mean, Susan?
I'm thinking about our town being incorporated back in 1645, and how much our town has changed between that time and now. You know, people seem a little bit nervous about change, but I think that with thoughtful and managed growth, we can make Manchester the same vibrant, welcoming community that it was probably back in the 1600s. You know, zoning didn't come in until the 1940s, and the town grew up sort of filling out the land haphazardly. And then zoning changed that. And so, as Chris was saying, zoning needs to change now to fit what we have, and zoning needs to change now so that we can move forward as a community with the changes that will make us continue to be a vibrant and growing community for the future. I want to go back to the MBTA for just one second, although I said I wouldn't go back to things. But I think it's really important with the MBTA zoning bylaw that if the task force comes up with a compliance plan that includes a change in the zoning, it doesn't get passed by the planning board. It's bigger than that. The select board will bless it. It will go to town meeting, and there will be examples of this is what will happen if we apply this compliance plan to our town. And this is what will happen if you vote it down. And this is what will happen if we have no compliance plan. And I just think it's important to step back on the MBTA issue a little bit and keep it in a realistic perspective. I look forward to continuing my work on the planning board, and I hope that I'll get your vote on May 16th.
Thank you, Susan. Chris Olney?
So I'm going to go back a little bit. Actually, first I'm going to say that Susan's point about town meeting being the deciding body on the zoning is very important. And that's why the task force is important, because if the planning board just did it, everyone would say, what do they know? But by having representatives from all the other boards in town participating in this process, we can create the momentum we need to at least consider a zoning change for the downtown to comply with the MBTA. The second thing I want to say is that I share Marty's passion for affordable housing. I've been working in affordable housing for 20 years. I would love it if we could require every project have some affordability component. Unfortunately, it's illegal. We can't do it. What we can do is trade with a developer and say, we'll give you a little more density if you give us some affordability. But just requiring it is, that's not going to get through the Attorney General, so it's unfortunate. One thing I also want to say is that I believe that we can add an affordability component to the downtown zoning. So we could probably say 10% of the units have to be affordable for projects of more than 10 units or something, and that might pass muster. So it's something the task force could look at. So there are paths ahead. Unfortunately, it's not simple. It requires patience and thoughtfulness and the input of a lot of people, and that's what we're going to be doing over the next year and a half. I hope you'll consider voting for me on May 16th, and thank you for coming.
All right. That's great. We're making up for lost time. So, Donna, I mean, honestly, it's, this is, if, the longer you go, the less time we have for people asking questions from the audience, and I'm sure they're anxious. So, Donna, first, you're going to close it out for us, please.
Whew, the pressure. First of all, I want to thank all the candidates tonight for their very thoughtful and insightful answers, as well as the moderator and for Eli, who's behind the wall over there. Actually, it's interesting. I actually think we agree more than we disagree on most of the things that we discussed tonight, and that makes me very happy, to be honest with you. I hope my growth over the past four years and my persistence and determination to make a difference to our town has come through tonight. I like to use a famous quote from Margaret Thatcher, "You might have to fight a battle more than once to win it." I want to maintain Manchester's character and charm and do it in a responsible and transparent way. If elected to the planning board, I want to work to understand each other's perspective, to reach a common goal, to protect our town and to protect our town's future. We need better communication and a more collaborative approach on the planning board that is respectful and productive. I feel very strongly that voting for both Marty and myself to bring the current planning board to a more balanced state will allow this to happen. I hope you will consider voting for me on May 16th. To vote for a common-sense approach to growth, to vote for transparency, to vote for viewpoint diversity. So vote for smart growth that would maintain our New England coastal small village charm. Thank you so much.
All right. Well, thank you. Let's give a hand to the candidates. You've done a great job tonight. Okay, so now we're going to get into the portion of the, you know, public comment. So, we already have some hands that are shooting up. So let's get started. Eli Bowling will be managing this part.
Is the speaker working this time?
Doesn't sound it.
Yeah?
No.
Just so you know, the speaker may not be working for this particular microphone, and if it doesn't, it's okay. Just, if it doesn't, just project. And really, the most important thing is that it's being recorded, which it is. So please speak into the microphone when it's handed to you.
Testing, testing. Hello? Testing, testing.
Yeah, I think...
So I'm going to go around and ask questions.
Check, check, check.
Get questions from the audience, if possible, about policy and initiatives. Testing, testing. Oh, it works. So much better. Better for you, better for me, better for them. Then we'll pick people at random to answer them, and we'll try and keep it moving along as quickly as we can. State your name when you ask a question.
My name is Sylvia Frezendorf. This is a question for Donna and Marty. And Marty, I hear your frustration. Talk, talk, talk. No action. Now, I am a organizational psychologist and a team coach, and I have been observing the planning board for several years. And luckily, because of Zoom, I can be in the meetings. And from my professional background, I have observed that one of the reasons that the board has had such difficulty of moving has been of a major rift within the planning board. So my question to you is, if you two are elected, what are you going to do about that so that you are working together as opposed at cross purposes, which is what I have observed?
Marty, do you want to go first?
And Mr. Flag, go first.
Sure. So these are elected positions, and people are elected on their policies, their background, what they're going to do, okay? And there's seven people on the board. I believe in a good argument, fighting for something, fixing it, and I believe in compromise, okay? I've also watched the Zoom meetings, okay? The problem is, your assumption is that this thing needs to move smoothly and do exactly what maybe you want to happen. But for someone else, they might be very happy that they're not doing something. And that's called voting, and that's the American way. Difference of opinion, fight for what you believe, okay? And then vote, and then move on and shake hands, okay? The reason that the people of Massachusetts made the planning boards an elected position is because they're completely different policies with people. The way that our brains work, you know that, we think totally differently than different people. In politics, you're all the way, there's three sides to every issue. I'm a middle-of-the-road guy. I'll compromise every time with people, okay? My view is the four of us, Donna, Mary, Christine, will get things done. We will fix the ADU if it's worth fixing. We will figure out the senior housing. We will make it get through town meeting. It's not getting through now. So the assumption that these boards that are elected have to do exactly the same thing and work together is kind of a false thing. That's not the way that America works. That's not the way the election system works. I'm sorry. People don't get along in these things. You're supposed to fight for what you believe. You are, whatever your side is. And you go out and you gain momentum, you get voters, and you get your side in. That's how it works. And if your side loses, you just have to turn the page and move on and try next time. That's the American way, isn't it? We do it every four years with the president, two years with the Congress. We do it here every year. We're in here every year. Everybody has a difference of opinion, policies, okay? But if Donna and I, the four of us, we will get these things through. We are more closely aligned with the people that don't, didn't want these things in town meeting last year. I guarantee you that. We are moderates, okay? We are trying to get something passed through town, okay? They haven't, they failed.
Okay, I think...
That's it.
Donna?
Next?
I actually think that's...
Oh, is everybody answering the question? Sorry.
That was to both Donna and Marty.
Marty and Donna.
Yes.
Got it.
Yes.
Sorry.
First of all, thank you for asking the question. I actually think that's a phenomenal question and something that, obviously, I spoke about a little bit tonight and that I've observed. So for a long time, we were only able to do Zooming meetings, and only till recently, I think it was March, I think, that we were allowed to come back into person. And just being an observer, whether it's on Zoom, it was better in person than it was on Zoom, to be honest with you, but it was hard. And you're not wrong with regards to kind of the, and I find it for all of the planning board members. I'm not going to pick one or the other or whatnot. I just felt like these meetings went on for a very long period of time, communicating, discussing things, whether you agreed on one side or not on another side. It just was really difficult from a long period of time to get things passed, discussed, moved on. These meetings, I mean, sometimes I'd stay there till 9:30, and it was still, still moving on. If I get elected, I would hope, like I said, I have no agenda. I come at things from a very scientific perspective, as having my background in medicine. I just want the opportunity to be able to listen to everybody and hopefully be able to, like, you know, digest what everyone's saying and be respectful to every single person on the board. Everybody has a right to their opinion, and everybody has their right to their, he's a planner, she's a federal prosecutor. Everyone has their gifts and their natural gifts of what they know. And I will respect everybody's background, but we, you don't have to just be a planner or an architect or an engineer. I think viewpoint diversity and having people willing to listen to all sides is really important to the representation of our town, and I hope I can bring that type of balance to the board by listening to everybody and collaborating appropriately. That's what I hope.
So moderator's privilege, because this question was very generic in nature about working together, I'm going to broaden the question out to the rest of the board members. Mr. Olney, go.
I'm not sure if I know how to answer that question. I disagree with Marty that I don't think that this is a political, necessarily a political exercise. There is common ground, certainly, to be negotiated, and the planning board works best when we are collaborating, not when we're fighting with each other. And I would hope that in the future, the board will be able to tackle these issues in a more collaborative way. I will say that part of the problem is the nature of what we've been doing for the past couple of years, trying to work out technical language that's hard to communicate to others and hard for us to understand as well. So there was that hurdle. Luckily, we're over that now, so I think there's probably room for a much more productive discussion amongst the board.
Susan?
Well, I've only been on the board since mid-January, and although the meetings are long sometimes, I do feel like communication has gotten better since I joined the board. I also feel like the board has become more efficient. I'm not taking credit for any of that, but I feel as though the board is moving in a positive direction in terms of working better together. And I hope that it continues. It's certainly something that is important to me and that I've tried to work on, and I think our chair has been working hard to make the meetings more civil and more cooperative and more efficient.
Okay. Next question. You had your hand up before. I'd like to hang on just a second. Let me get down to you.
Thank you.
John Jay. I have a question for Chris and Sue. And actually, you were kind enough to send me your own personal message to the Council on Aging, and you wrote a letter in the Seniors by the Sea. Are you familiar with that?
Yes.
Okay.
This letter here.
Yes, I'm familiar with it.
At the beginning, Erica, you mentioned you wanted to ensure that this whole process was fair.
Yes, meaning this particular process right here that we're in?
At the beginning, you indicated you wanted this whole process to be fair.
I wanted this event to be conducted in a process that was fair, yeah. That's correct.
An extension of that is the political process that's going forward here. This is a letter from the town that you, Chris, actually wrote, asking for the vote of the senior citizens. Do you think that that is a fair vantage point? First of all, who paid for this?
The Friends of the Council on Aging funds the募募募募募募募募募募募募 募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募募
The question simply is...
Everybody here is in the dark. Please, ask the question.
The question, would the other candidates have the same opportunity to put their communication in this letter?
Isn't that for the Council on Aging? Is that you?
The Friends of the Council on Aging funds this, but we have nothing to do with the writing or the publication.
So answer his question, please, so we can...
But I can't.
I know, but his question is, and I think your question is for her, is this open to other candidates? Which, by the way, this is a forum for these candidates. So can they, the other candidates, participate in your, what is that? Council on Aging thing?
Friends of the Council.
So to read?
Great. Is the answer, please, just is the answer yes?
She doesn't know.
Oh, okay, well, I would imagine the, oh, Greg?
To recap this, I'm going to interrupt here. Your question has been asked the candidates, but the candidates cannot answer your question because they don't know the answer.
Yeah, I feel like...
So this is not a question about policy, or planning board policy, or initiatives.
And this isn't the Council on Aging.
This is a question that you should address to the Council on Aging.
I'm confused.
Did the town administer?
No, 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 no. This is not a question for the planning board candidates.
What is the, can I see, can you give that to me?
This is a forum for the planning board candidates. So have a seat. We're going to move on for questions for the planning board candidates. Anybody else?
It's 9:05. It's 9:05.
Hi, Sandy Turner. I have a question for Marty. I'm so confused, Marty. I wonder
Okay. I'm very confused about your position on a variety of issues, because on the one hand you say, "Get it done, let's get it done, let's have more, let's have another limited commercial district, let's build, let's build." And on the other hand, you say, "Well, but now let's slow things down, we need to deliberate, we need to take our time, and we need to be kind of afraid about the MBTA situation." So I, you know, which is it? I mean, you want ADUs, you want affordable housing, is that real? I mean, I don't, I'm very confused about what you stand for, given what you've had to say tonight, because you've spoken basically out of both sides of your mouth, and I'm sure there's clarity to you, but there sure isn't to me.
I've stated it in my letter to the editor, I've stated it on Facebook posts. The Affordable, Accessory Dwelling Unit article needs to be edited. I am a no for that right now. So isn't, okay, I'm a no for that. If it's edited and changed and it's perfected, it might be able to get by town muster and town hall. It might not. Secondly, I am a no for the senior housing. It needs to be edited and changed. You can't put senior housing, commercial businesses in residential districts. There has to be, there has to be changes. I can say whatever I want, but if you don't get this voted on, okay, it's not going to work. There has to be changes to these, there has to be compromise. If we can figure out some good compromise, let me finish. If we can figure out the compromise, then I would be for it, if it's better, putting some, senior housing over in a limited commercial district, finding new places to do it other than in residential districts, do you understand? That's why I am a no for everything until it gets to the point where it can get past town votes. It's not doing that, you have to admit that. It's actually been pulled off.
It's been pulled off because of misinformation about the...
That's your opinion.
Yeah. Well, that's my opinion, and it's different than...
Behind you is the chair of the planning board. He pulled off the ADUs last fall and the senior housing. He didn't bring them off the table this past town meeting, and he's pulling off the ADUs because of density issues. It's not perfected yet. I would like to do something like that, and I think it's good, okay? What you're saying is you don't agree with me, that's fine, don't vote for me, but I'm telling you, they need to be perfected to get through town hall, a town meeting, and they are not, and they are a failure.
How would you change this?
The senior housing? I would make senior housing, the commercial part of senior housing would go into the limited commercial district. If you're going to do 55 and older apartments or town homes on selected areas in town, okay, that does not make it a commercial building, and you can do an overlay in certain areas where the planning board finds appropriate, or like Chris said, that has the appropriate roads and infrastructure, yes, yes, okay? But I'm not for, in addition, I'm not for MBTA mandating that we have hundreds of parcels that have become multifamily with 15. I'm not for that. There has to be, for the MBTA, there has to be some compromise. I believe that other towns are saying no, this might get litigated, we might be in hold anyway. And in the meantime, while we figure it out with the task force and the other people on the, we can do better. Maybe Chris is right, we don't even need to worry about it. I doubt that very, very much. I doubt that very much.
Okay.
So I'm a wait and hold and do better and get them past town. If they don't get voted on, then what's the purpose of putting them out there?
Okay, let's give somebody else a chance.
Gary Russell, nine Magnolia Avenue. So I can't help myself, I will start with a bit of an opinion, and that is, well, I think I agree with the statement that there's a lack of talent to get things done, but I think we might disagree where that lack lies. I'm, I've been watching all of this unfold, and I'm rather stunned, some of the things have been said that reveal a fundamental lack of understanding of zoning concepts and the requirements and responsibilities of what the planning board actually does, can do, and is responsible for. Therefore, for my next question, which is very important to all of us in this room, I'd like to first direct this to Chris, the only professional planner up here tonight. That's the issue of character. We all talk about character and wanting to preserve character in town, but we can't protect something that hasn't been defined. So in order for us to regulate character and protect it through the regulatory framework, we need to first come up with that definition. So I'd like to understand, how might that process look for the community to come together to define specifically what character is, and within the realm of legally available frameworks, how would you actually regulate character? Whether that be design overlay districts, expansions of historic districts, all of those types of actual zoning land use techniques.
Okay, so that question...
I think he directed it to Chris.
It's to Chris.
Just to Chris.
It's going to go to Chris, but I'll give other folks opportunity to answer it. We could spend a lot of time on the details of that question, so...
I'm going to be brief.
Yeah.
I'm going to be brief because that is a very difficult question to answer. I will say this, I've thought a lot about the character of Manchester, and I've lived here a long time and grew up here. I think that what the character of the town that is so intriguing to everybody is its diversity, its diversity of landforms, of the way roads are laid out, of architecture, of uses. And what's funny is that it was all, what makes this town charming was all built before there was any zoning at all, because the first zoning didn't happen here till around 1950. So, and the other thing about zoning is it's the opposite of diversity. It says, everything has to be the same, you have to have the same, the right frontage, the right lot size, you know, Levittown, where all the houses look alike, that's the ultimate result of zoning. So we have this conflict between trying to weaponize zoning to keep the town the way it is. Well, what we're celebrating is the lack of zoning which created it to begin with. So how do we preserve it without having to weaponize our zoning? I think there could be design controls put in place, historic review, there are a lot, there are a lot of ways that we could figure this out, but it's not, we're not going to solve it tonight.
Okay, so Mr. Flood, you're next up. So how do we, re-stating the question, is, a lot has been said in the election about how we maintain the small-town character, and how does the planning board go about doing that with the zone?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not a planner. We've had planners on the board for a while, that's obvious. They come and go, seems like. They don't have the temperament to stay on the board and deal with people. Is that you?
Yeah, that's me. Me and several others.
And, and I understand where you're coming from. It's a beautiful town. We want to do things to help, all the things, with the ADUs, with the money, with the taxes, with the senior housing, with the public housing. I'm calling to expand properties and find them, okay? The character of town, it's a gorgeous town, I don't know how you, you're going to keep the character by regulating what is built, what it looks like, if we get to that point, okay? Let's just say, whatever happens with the articles going forward, if I'm involved in them with Donna or not, or Chris or Susan, there'll be time to compromise on everything, okay? Keeping the character of town is vital. It's written in every single page of that master plan, 100 and, what is it, 177? It's repeated over and over and over and over and over. So is affordability, by the way. And I, I think everything that we've built should be beautiful. Everything that we do, we should make sure the builders make it so it is absolutely stunning. If we're going to end up doing projects for seniors and parcels of land, it should be awesome, okay? And everyone on the board should agree with that, and everyone on the board should agree to do that. We also have to moderate and be tempered on what we're doing. You can't build out 500 units and keep the town that way, okay? It will end up looking like downtown Beverly, which I love. I think they did a great job, and they keep doing that. But I'm with you, and I'm sorry that it was frustrating for you to stay on the board as a planner. I think this is more of a policy thing and a leadership and a final decision thing than it is a planner. Obviously, they have problems. We had people leaving, and I will do a better job. I will be here, and I will work through all the problems, and I'll work with people, okay? I'm a tough cookie and I'm a fighter, but I can work things through. I got through Essex with my project, and you have no idea how hard that was over there.
Okay.
Actually, I do, I own property in Essex.
Okay. Let's be quick, we have...
Susan. I don't think we want to regulate the appearance of every property that's built in town. I don't think that's what gives our town the character, and that's also way outside the purview of the planning board. I don't think, if we want to create an architectural board in the town, that's up to the town, but the planning board does not exist to design the exteriors of buildings. We have certain requirements in site plan review or in review of applications for special permits, but we're not in the business of regulating historical architecture, and I'm not sure that's where the town wants to go. I think our town character was defined in the master plan, it's all over the master plan. And I agree with Chris, it comes from not just the diversity of topography, but the diversity of the neighborhoods. I mean, look at the four neighborhoods here. Donna lives on the beach on Blossom Lake, Chris lives on Old Neck Road, I live in the woods, Loading Place Road, Marty lives in Hickory Hill. None of us live downtown, unfortunately, but there are members of the planning board who do. But the diversity of the neighborhoods is a huge part of our town character and part of what people are worried about preserving.
Ms. first.
Yeah, I actually really enjoyed what you just said, Sue. I think everybody has their opinion of why you moved here, small-town character, small-town feel. Each one of us might have a little bit of a different opinion what that may, may be, but I agree with Sue, like, every district is, their housing is a little bit different. It's not necessarily the same, and I think if we, you know, want to continue like with growth and smart growth, you know, developing and building in every residential district, as long as you're building within the character of what's in that particular district, that makes sense to me. Again, I don't disagree with anything, especially what Sue just said, I think with the topography, the beautiful differences within the entire community, and housing being built specific to those particular areas within the districts, within the zoning bylaws, is important, and that's all I have to say about that. Sorry.
Okay. I want to just interrupt here because the 1623 folks are, we've come to the end, they've come, so I'm just going to say thank you very much, the candidates, this does not mean we're completely done, but thank you very much, the candidates. Thank you, Eli, and the team at 1623 Studios, which is our community television partners, they're wonderful, for all the great work. Election Day is Tuesday, May 16th, and the polls are going to be open at Manchester Memorial School, so thank you very much, and this concludes our program.
Thank you.[1790.73][1790.73]